All right, I am going to call the regular afternoon council meeting of, what day is it today? April 9th to order. First up is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Can I get a motion for that? Moved by Counsel Arneson, seconded by Counsel Qualley. All those in favor? Opposed? Carried with Counsel Davis, Mayor Fros, Counsel Fox, and Counsel Richter absent. All right. Next, we're going to approve the evening delegations that we have. No, we're gonna do, sorry, we're gonna do A2. We're gonna deal with the evening delegations.
And then the minutes.
And then the minutes, yeah. So you have on your table the delegations. Staff is before it, so we have fourteen delegations currently for the evening meeting. Counsel Long, you're moving all fourteen? Okay, Counsel Long moves all fourteen delegations. Do we have a second there for that? Counsel Qualley seconds?
No, she didn't.
Oh, sorry, Counsel Qualley. Counsel Arneson, sorry, in my head it was, I was thinking of you. Counsel Arneson, seconds. Sorry, Counsel Qualley. All right, discussion? All right, Counsel Qualley?
I'm not gonna support that. Can I make a referral motion? Or can I, yeah. No, just vote against the thing. That's probably easier, sorry.
Okay, okay, any other discussion? No, okay. So I'm gonna call the vote. Hold on here. Call the vote. No, the meeting has already started, so we're gonna move ahead here. All right, so call the vote, so we're gonna label it, hold on. A2. Okay, and then I have to vote. Oh, gosh, this is so complicated. Okay, opposed, okay, and... Thanks. Complete? Okay, so that fails with Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Sparrow, and Counsel Qualley opposed. All right. So now we're back to... Close results. So we're still on A2 evening delegations. Do we have any other... Where do we go from here? No, so we're off to the, onto the minutes, okay.
To describe what that means, however, so that means council then by its process would by the procedural bylaw proceed with the five delegations, the first five delegations. The rest would then be put to the next meeting.
Correct. All right, so we are on to now item B1, adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting, March 19th. Can I get a motion? Moved by Counsel Qualley. Second advice. Oh, okay. So we'll go back then and we'll hear from... So, hold on, okay. We've got...
Yeah, thank you then, because after the vote was taken and it failed, I had a question then, and I guess it's been somewhat clarified. So that means one to five are going to be heard?
Correct.
But I believe that the policy used to be that the others would come at the end of the meeting, but that's not the case then?
The policy is now silent on that, so it's up to the will of council if they wish to actually schedule them later. Perhaps as a suggestion, because just to refresh council's memory, we've had the vote on accepting all delegations. That would have required a two-thirds majority of those present to actually succeed. In any event, that vote was unsuccessful, it was defeated. So that leaves us then with what to do next. As it stands at the present time then, with no vote, it would be the first five delegations. As a suggestion, council may wish to entertain that those matters relating to the Williams Plan be set for the public hearing date. The reason for that is it's unusual, but not unheard of, to have delegations prior to the public hearing opportunity. So that would be one way of disposing of it. If that were to occur, and it may not occur, but if that were to occur, that would leave us with five delegations for the evening session, covering effectively the interim tree bylaw, which is on the agenda this evening, and as well, one matter regarding a recognition of a crosswalk in Walnut Grove.
I'm not sure as I fully understand the last bit, you're saying that maybe one of us could make a motion that the Williams Park, that's number eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, be referred to the evening, well, we don't even know if there is a public hearing because it hasn't been...
There is. The public hearing would require a decision as to first and second reading. This, however, is not a development application, this is a neighborhood plan. If that were to occur, if the neighborhood plan were not to pass first and second reading, council then could reconsider or consider having them come forth after that as reasons why there may be further delegations necessary to deal with the issue of no first and second reading. Again, development applications are sometimes defeated at first and second reading, but usually neighborhood plans are going to public hearing.
You can tell by the start of this meeting, anything could happen, so, all right, so we'll just leave it silent and that's what's...
That's what, that is what has occurred, yes, yeah.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate it.
Okay. Next, I've got Counsel Richter.
I'd like to move reconsideration on the delegations.
Okay, do we have a second there for reconsideration? Counsel Arneson, all right. So... What do I label, what do I do now? Label that something?
It would be A3.
A3, okay. All right, so we've got a motion for reconsideration. There is no, is there debate on the reconsideration, or is that... We just have it back on the...
Reconsideration is not the motion itself, so reconsideration, there can be reasons as to, given as to why council members feel the vote should be reconsidered, but not as to the substantive matter of the vote itself, just why the matter could be reconsidered.
Okay, so do we have any... Okay, hold on, I'm gonna...
This is again, just for, should reconsideration be successful, the motion will be alive before council back on the floor.
Right, so the vote right now is for reconsideration?
Correct.
And do we have any speakers for reconsideration?
Just wait for my voice, it's gone. But for reconsideration, is there a particular percentage that's required for the reconsideration to pass? Just 50?
Just majority vote.
Majority vote, okay.
Okay. Seeing no other speakers, I'll call the vote for reconsideration of the delegation. Right, so... It fails on a tie, is that correct? So it fails on a tie with Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Sparrow, and Counsel Qualley opposed. All right. So now... Are we back to doing the approval of the minutes? Is that where we are? Okay, thank you.
Actually, I've had my...
Oh, oh, okay, sorry. Counsel Qualley.
I'd like to move that the delegations number six through 14 be referred to a public hearing, and if there is for some reason no public hearing, that they be invited to come back to speak to council if they deem it necessary.
So would that be all of the Williams Plan, Neighborhood Plan delegations?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so that all of the, so the motion is that all of the neighbor, the Williams Neighborhood Plan delegations for this evening be moved to the public hearing? And that if no public hearing proceeds, then they will be invited back?
To speak to council.
To speak to council.
Can we be specific, Madam Chair? You're talking about six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14?
It's everything, so five, six, eight?
Five's already been approved.
Oh, the, oh, I'm sorry, I thought the motion was that all of the Williams Neighborhood Plan delegations be moved to the...
That is the motion.
Yes. So that would be, if you can see on your list here, they all say Williams Neighborhood Plan, that would be all of those be moved to...
It is approved in the context of it meets the requirements of the procedural bylaw for the fifth delegation. What this now is, is a simple referral of all Williams Plan matters to the public hearing night, which would effectively take number seven and put into the fifth position.
Correct, because it's not related to Williams.
Because it's not related to Williams, yeah.
That's my motion.
All right.
Is that clear, Ms. Bauer? Sorry, thank you.
Okay, so Counsel Qualley's made that motion, do I have a second there? Counsel Whitmarsh seconds. All right, and... Okay, I'm going to go to speakers, which Counsel Richter is first in line.
Well, I was actually gonna ask for a point of clarification, but I think Mr. Backen just gave it to us. So instead of taking the first five, we're actually knocking number five down and bringing number seven up. So we will hear nothing tonight on the Williams Neighborhood Plan. I think that's wrong, and I'm not gonna support that.
Okay. Next up, Counsel Long?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. I would say that delegation number five, which was in on time and met the criteria, ought to be allowed to speak. I understand the intent of the motion was to, you know, try and clear some stuff up, but I don't believe it's fair to bump him, bump that to number five off and bring in number seven in, which is clearly outside of the procedural bylaw, so I won't support it either. I think we should hear from number five if, I'd like to hear from them all, but at minimum, they should be allowed to speak if they got everything in on time.
All right, thank you, Counsel Long. I will add my comments. I think that we have a public hearing process and that all of these delegations will be able to be heard during that process, so I am gonna support referring them to our public hearing processes. I think that's the appropriate and legislative way that we are hearing from the public when it comes to these matters. So I'm going to support it, and I am going to call the vote now. And I'm gonna label this A, no, what am I labeling this? A4 now we are, okay, A4. All right. We have an issue with our, it, council can see it on their monitors, but the screen. So that is defeated on a tie vote with Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, and Counsel Long opposed. So we are back now to the originally scheduled program of, we are on to B1, the regular adoption of the minutes of the regular afternoon council meeting. Can I get a motion for that, please? Moved by Counsel Qualley, seconded by Counsel Whitmarsh. Okay, I have speakers now on that. Counsel Long?
Yeah, I think there may have been a vote not recorded correctly, and that is in... Excuse me, this screen is so small. There was, there was, that's right here, it is the notice of motion that was voted on by council, that was put forward by Counsel Fox. So this is item 1.2, I believe? There were some amendments made, which I voted against, and that's, I mean, there was a few, but it still passed. But would it not show those opposed? Because it says main motion as amended was carried, and it showed no one opposed? I'm sure that I was opposed. And I would suggest, although Counsel Davis is not here, that those that opposed the first part most likely or possibly could have opposed the second part too.
All right, just let staff confer slightly.
They're all nodding ahead, yeah.
I think it's logical then that Arneson, Davis, Long, and Richter were opposed to the main motion as amended.
Okay, so we'll have the minutes adjusted to reflect that. Thank you, Counsel Long. I've got Counsel Richter.
Yep, I was gonna bring up the same item, because it looks like it was carried unanimously, and it definitely wasn't, so...
Great, so we've got that...
Could those opposed be included?
Perfect, we've got that done. All right, so can I, we're no other speakers, so we're gonna call the vote then on adoption of the minutes? As amended, yeah. We can just raise our hands for this one, it makes it easy, thank you, and that's carried unanimously. All right, so now a motion to resolve into the special closed meeting. Moved by Counsel Arneson, seconded by Counsel Whitmarsh. And I've got a speaker, Counsel Richter.
I'm opposed to item E3 being in camera.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed. Counsel Richter is opposed to going to special closed meeting. All right. Thank you, yes, and we are now going to special closed, thank you. All the regular afternoon council meeting of April 9th back to order, and we are gonna start with E1, delegations. And I'm gonna ask that Ryan from OTG Developments come forward. You have five minutes. Thank you very much, I'll start you off. There you go, go ahead.
My name is Ryan Anderson, I do represent OTG Developments and the owners of the two subject properties here today. My office is located in Chilliwack at 520-45715 Hawking Avenue. We, I thought we had a PowerPoint presentation that was prepared. Thank you very much. Oh, oh, was I supposed to do that? I'm sorry. So before I get started, I'll note as well that Colin Frye has also been asked to represent the ownership today, so will also be participating, participating a little bit in the presentation today. I don't know if we're gonna need the whole five minutes, I just wanted to make a few points. We appreciate the, this work that staff have done and work with us and visiting the site with us, et cetera, et cetera. We did wanna just maybe make a couple comments about this, some of the items in the staff report. While we recognize that the official community plan, the rural plan, and the regional growth strategy don't specifically support an exclusion from the ALR, we did wanna point out that the zoning bylaw would support the subdivision that is ultimately gonna be proposed. We're not asking to amend the official community plan, we wouldn't be asking to rezone the property, amend the regional growth strategy, or the rural plan. We would simply be looking to do an exclusion of what we feel is not arable land in any way, shape, or form, and then do a subdivision under the existing zoning bylaw. So we thought it would be worthwhile to point out that while the OCP rural plan and regional growth strategy may not specifically support the exclusion, the zoning bylaw would propose the ultimate subdivision, which has been discussed with staff. So just getting to the maps here, this is the subject property. Just showing more than anything else, what we were hoping to show is that you can see that this is kind of an anomaly in the middle of some suburban development, all of those lots that are to the northeast, and some of the ones to the south and west are all falling under the same zoning category that the subject property has on it. It is dual-zoned, but the subdivision would occur underneath the suburban designation that exists on the property. And again, just showing a little bit more close up the context of the subject property as far as, again, the neighborhood context is suburban in nature. And then the next slide we wanted to show was that in addition to being contextually accurate as far as the proposal is concerned, the subject property has a great deal of slopes on it, and only a sliver of the whole land is actually flat and usable in any way, shape, or form. If you can see this fairly well, the colors are a little bit different than I'm used to, but essentially this purple area here is a ravine, so the majority of the property actually is a ravine with a water course running through it. This area here is a lot more steep slope area, and the area through this area here is the only flat portion of the property. So it's not possible to have an active farm on this property. The vast majority of it is on hills that are in excess of 20%, and again, ravines and with a significant water course running through it. Just again, getting back to the zoning of the property, we can see here that the majority of the property is the suburban residential, which we see that the majority of the properties around are as well, again, the suburban residential. And I might invite Colin Frye to come up and speak to this a little bit. We just wanted to speak a little bit about the history of the ALC's decision-making process for the immediate...
I will say you're down to just under a minute, so...
Very good.
I can be brief. I think when I first looked at this property, I think it is anomalous. The property is broken up into about three or four different actual sections due to the slopes, the very, very severe slopes. There's only one access point off of 240th. And when you go and look at it, we've just come to, it's just come to our attention to, if you look on this map, the properties outside the ALR to the east, adjacent to this property, were the subject of previous ALR exclusion applications to the commission and subsequently developed. That only came to our attention recently, last week, and we have made inquiries for the documents, and we can provide those as well. But to the property to the south and of, the property to the south of the subject property, it has been subdivided within the ALR as to the north of the property as well. And the reason those are still in the ALR is because when it went to the commission, it was in the form of a subdivision within the ALR application and not an exclusion. What we're saying here is this really needs to be adjudicated by the commission as to what is it in fact ALR land? And we're fairly confident to suggest that the land form out there with the Salmon River floodplain, the river itself, the severe slopes, this property cannot be considered a 45-acre contiguous ALR piece of property. It would be very, very difficult to manage it as a single unit, and it would be very, very difficult, if at all possible, to operate machinery on this property. And it takes a site inspection for the commission to really go out there and see the limitations of this property for agricultural purposes, so...
Thank you, okay. I do have questions of council, so if you wanted to stand up there, that'd be great. Counsel Richter?
Okay, so we've got in total 45 acres there, correct, between the two parcels? Now, it's split between SR, which, SR1, which the minimum lot size is .91 of an acre, and RU1 with a minimum lot size of 4.2 acres. So what percentage is SR and what percentage is RU?
I'll be very honest with you, I'm just guessing here, but it's approximately one-third is that rural designation? And just for clarity, the plan is to donate all of that land to either the township of Langley for park purposes, or we've already been in touch and working with the Salmon River Enhancement Society about potentially donating it to them, because they're trying to put a trail network system through there. And they, needless to say, are very open-minded about having that property used for their trail system for free.
Okay, can you show me on the map where the one-third rural is then? RU, the one-third RU?
So Counsel Richter, through the chair, I apologize. If you can note this demarcation line here?
Yeah.
So this is the area here, which is the RU1. And then this portion of the property essentially here...
Is SR.
SR1, correct.
Okay, and so that part that's RU, that's steeply sloped. I mean, I've been down there, that's all like really deep ravine to the river.
It's, the only thing it's useful for is looking at and maybe some trail system, it's significantly sloped.
Okay, and the RU designation that's there, is that the RU designation that permits two houses per lot?
I actually don't know whether that does or not. We've never looked at developing that portion of it, and again, our intention was to just donate it either to the community or to the Salmon River Enhancement Society. We have no intention of putting houses there.
So on the SR part, how many houses are you planning?
If I remember correctly, I believe it was, it was 15. You can see...
Actually, go with the air photo. Now, the air photo is of note here, the, if you can see the oblong-shaped cleared area, that is the only area of the property that has any, or is not challenged with slopes. That is the only area. Once you get to the south end of that, it has a steep downward slope and also to the west.
So the light green area in the middle is where you're gonna put 15 houses?
No, we can, and my company right now is working on about 150 projects, and very few of them involve flat land, just in the nature of what's left to be able to develop right now. And so we would be using some of the slopes for housing, but I'm not 100% sure how many units we'd be able to get on right now, just because we'd have to go through a geotechnical analysis and see what is achievable on the property. But again, the only portion of land that we would be looking to develop is the area under the existing SR1 zoning.
Well, I mean, I live in the area, there's a lot of flat land there, it's not just that green stretch.
In the immediate area, absolutely, Counsel Richter, but if we can go to this map again, you can see here that this is the significant, this is the Salmon River steep slope areas in the purple. The brown is also considered to be steep slopes as well. So the only, I apologize, the colors are a little different than what we had, but it's essentially just this little strip in here that is, would be considered to be flat. If you're standing on the property, it slopes immediately down to your right as you look south, and it slopes immediately up to your left if you're looking south.
Okay, so the, all the orange land there would not have houses, or would have houses?
We feel that we might be able to, depending on the geotechnical analysis, because at the end of the day, until we understand what the setback from the top of bank would be for geotechnical considerations would be, I apologize, Counsel Richter, but I just have trouble answering the question until we do that full-blown geotechnical analysis.
Okay, and why didn't you bring us like a diagram of how you would lay this?
We did at one point have a subdivision application, but because of the nature of the type of work that we would have to do even to get it to this point, we thought it would be better just to see, quite frankly, if the Agricultural Land Commission would be willing to exclude the majority of the land and then come back and work with your staff that have been very helpful so far, to see what type of a development would be achievable.
Great, thank you. There's no other questions from council. Thank you so much for coming out tonight to speak to us.
Thanks very much.
All right, so we're gonna move on now to E2. Carol Lee from the Senior Services Society. See her there, that's great, come down. You've got five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I found you, I went to the other city of Langley.
Oh, no.
But I made it. So I'm Carol Lee with Senior Services Society. We are a not-for-profit specifically serving seniors, based out of New Westminster, but we serve the whole lower mainland with regards to seniors homelessness outreach services and homeless prevention for seniors over 60. So I hope you've all got a copy of the information from in advance? Okay, great. So I'm just gonna kind of run through it. We assist seniors with housing and social programs. We did a research bit in 2002, it was called Out of Sight, Out of Mind, and it was really researching for the first time in Metro Vancouver what the needs were of seniors who are homeless. And we learned a lot from that report. We're learning that seniors are really part of the hidden homeless, and as we, you know, unveil the numbers that come out of the homeless count, most recently in March of 2017, and just even the numbers that the local community groups, like stepping stones here within the Langley community, that they're really seeing a lot of seniors that are being affected with homelessness, but they're hidden, they're not the ones that we're going to see. So couch surfing, living in their cars, living in motels, generally just living in inconspicuous spaces. So 90% of the people that we see that we're working with, they're homeless for the first time. And what that means in terms of how we can help them from a funding standpoint, it means that federal dollars don't allow for us to work with them, because federally, the definition of homeless is around the chronic and episodic homelessness, and that's really making sure that people are being helped that are over, been homeless for over 180 days, which means sadly for seniors in our communities, particularly in the township of Langley and in the city of Langley and elsewhere, it really means that seniors that are homeless are not being able to be served by federal dollars. So I'm here to talk a little bit about, you know, that homelessness is on the rise, particular in this community. We've looked at some of the statistics around Metro Vancouver, and there's been a 23% increase since, or sorry, there's been a reflection of 23% of the population that's homeless found to be senior. of 23% of the population that's homeless found to be senior. And what that relates to Langley, it's that there was 206 people that were homeless and 24 were senior. So that's who was actually physically counted on that specific day in March in 2017. But our numbers are telling us even more of the story. Our seniors housing navigation services, the statistics that I got for the sake of this presentation, we saw, we worked with over 2,000 people in all of Metro Vancouver, but 10 of them were from Langley that we actually were able to work with. We know that we turned away 600 and we don't do a good job actually tracking of the people we're turning away because of limited resources, where they're coming from first. So we can just only use the estimate based on what the homeless count numbers are where. So we know that there's an underserved amount of people that are living without a home within this community and we're really going out to different municipalities to talk about what the role your municipality and township would be able to play within this portfolio. So we're out there, we have a housing counselor who's counseling seniors all over BC. We have a housing outreach team, there's four of us, four people, and they're trying to cover the whole lower mainland with homeless outreach for seniors. We have a temporary shelter, it's the only shelter that specifically helps seniors and it's sort of an alternative to the traditional shelter. And the model that we use is really being able to have in each community sort of a safe space for seniors. So in New Westminster and Burnaby, and we did trial one in Surrey, but it's not there anymore, where we gain an apartment, sort of a self-contained apartment, and then we offer temporary shelter to a senior. But we like them to be embedded within each of the municipalities. So it's not stripping the person from where they're coming from, bringing them all the way to Burnaby or New Westminster. It's being able to create that space within the portfolio, the very limited housing portfolio. We can appreciate that, but making sure that there is a space or two for the individual that, you know, is finding themselves homeless. And we're trying to have a continuum that's with dignity and respect to continue to find them their long-term appropriate housing. So key funding for seniors who are homeless for the first time, as I mentioned, the Government of Canada funding, it means you have to be homeless for 180 days, so that doesn't help. BC Housing, they're doing their part. They have a lot of contracts with local not-for-profits to try and help reduce homelessness within the communities, and so that is helping. But they're seeing an overload of number of people over 55 and it's on the rise. Stepping Stones told me just recently that over 412 seniors called them last year in 2017 that were seniors over 55 at risk of homeless or homeless ultimately. And with our numbers coupled, that we worked with 10 from last year and the homeless count found that there was 24. We don't know how many of these are repeat because we're not sitting around with our confidentiality agreements matching up, you know, which ones are duplicates. But it's showing that there is a bit of an issue here and that seniors in this community do need to find safe and appropriate housing, maybe temporary in the interim, but obviously as well as long-term. And have a helper, which is what our expertise is with the housing outreach worker, is to really be able to, to be able to hold their hand and guide them. How am I for time?
Your five minutes is up.
It's up, okay.
So last little thing you need to say?
So basically, thank you. So basically, what our next steps are, we're putting together a proposal to expand our temporary housing program in making sure each community is aware that it's happening and to gain interest. And so what this municipality can do to help, we're really looking to fund or jointly fund homeless outreach workers specifically for seniors, encourage and support new builds, subsidize seniors housing developments, which I know already, you know, you're well aware of. And just to also help fund temporary housing spaces here in the township of Langley. And finally, when our proposal does come out, which will be a push to the BC Housing, the Ministry of Health and the Ministry of Poverty Reduction to seek your support in endorsing that proposal. So that's what my presentation is today. Thank you for having me.
I do have some questions of council, so if you could stay.
Sure.
Oh, I do?
Yeah, yeah, you don't need to get super close, it picks you up really well. So it makes it harder to hear you when you get too close.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Counselor Ernestson.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you're on.
Oh, thank you, I can't even hear myself. Thank you very much for coming today. I appreciate the fact that I'm aware of your services and I'm glad that you're doing this outreach to all the different communities. I know from the statistics that we are having an increasing challenge with homelessness for our senior population and that includes people that are just vulnerable in terms of couch surfing or being in extraordinary circumstances where they're not adequately housed, but they're just kind of making do, so that's a problem. So, and I assume that, as you said, you went to the city erroneously, but you're here to talk to us today, that's okay. The city of Langley, they have a seniors resource center there in which they do housing counseling. So I'm sure you're aware of that. So would this be something that could be integrated in some way into that as sort of co-funding perhaps, a person who works for both communities out of that same job?
Yeah, absolutely. So with regard, thank you for those comments. And our services do a training program to train the people that are at that resource to have a housing, senior-specific housing counselor sort of certification. So we're the group that comes in and trains them on an annual basis. So they're an extension of what we're doing. And the idea with the proposal is really to jointly partner with each of the municipalities or the townships in this proposal so that the person would, in this case, you know, the city of Langley and the township to be able to also partner in on that in partnership with our not-for-profit, where we would hire the outreach worker, but they would be embedded within the fabric of these communities and integrate within the services that are already existing so that we're not duplicating, being based out of New West. We're actually having satellite employees essentially specifically for homeless senior outreach. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and if you could please clarify, so I'm trying to understand the nature of what our contribution would be. And it seemed to me you were saying that we needed something along the lines of a place for this to happen, kind of like a hub or an office or something like that, is that correct?
It wouldn't need to be in addition to what already exists. So really weaving in with the existing fabric of the social services that exist. So either one of the Langley resource centers, seniors center, it could be more embedded within the shelter community. Essentially, they just need to have a bit of office space, but they would be roving among the different, you know, your municipality and your township to the different sites where people are naturally already going to seek support but don't have a lot of options to get support there because they don't, they're limited. They don't have an outreach worker. So nothing to be newly created, really embed within the already existing sites. And outreach workers, they kind of don't even really have an office. They sort of work out of their car anyway, meeting people where they are.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just assuming you may have spoken to our social planner at this point, which...
I have, I have not.
Oh, okay, well, I think that would be...
A good step.
Yeah, good step.
Absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great, all right. Next up, Counselor Long.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks for coming. You made a presentation to the Metro Housing Committee and that's what sort of spurred you coming here. And it may be very apropos that you, now that you know where the city is, that you go and make it... No, but you, I mean, it is an anomaly that we are a community within a community, so to speak. And maybe this is something we could partner with because an outreach worker would be working the area. There wouldn't be any boundaries between the city and the township. So I would encourage you to make a presentation to them too.
Absolutely.
And maybe this is definitely something that we could work together on and certainly with Patrick, our social planner, you know, have a chat with him too. I was just curious because when you made the presentation to the Housing Committee, you talked a lot about having an apartment unit. So is that coming yet? Is that something that we could help? Or maybe the word can get out to developers that perhaps, because they're going to get paid. There is some rental, not a lot, but there is some funds from BC Housing.
Right, so, yeah, thank you. So what the reference to that is that we currently have funding from BC Housing to be able to expand our temporary housing. We only have a few unit, money for a few units, so we're exploring where that best will be utilized in the Langley township and in the city. The numbers with regards to the local community groups that are telling us, you know, this is the number of homeless seniors we're seeing, is why, you know, I think Langley would be a good fit. So we do need to get connected with a housing provider who has, you know, subsidized housing. What we can pay for a unit is $375 and provide the outreach, but we just need to have a unit that a housing provider can come to the table. So any connection, you know, within, that you would know, we would be open to recommendation. Sitting with the social planner would be a great first step.
Good, I encourage you to do that. Thanks very much for coming out.
All right, thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I noticed here from your delegation request that you're looking for a letter of support and to request funds to fund a part-time seniors housing outreach worker for Langley. So my first question is, what's the cost of this? And are you specifically looking for money from us to cover that cost?
So it would be a partnership within the township and the city. About the cost, full-time, it would be about $50,000. And so the request would really be, right now it's just, yeah, making awareness of the needs that are happening, putting forth, you know, a potential opportunity for a partnership. And I think, you know, meeting with the social planner to talk about maybe connecting the two, you know, your two municipalities to discuss how that could look. You know, what could it, how could it unfold in terms of location, like Counselor Ernestson mentioned? And, yeah, but the cost is around $50,000 annually.
So this would be $50,000 and would this employee, would this person be an employee of your organization? And we're just giving you the money for it?
So the idea is that they would be an employee of our organization and we would create a memorandum of understanding with the local sites to make sure that they're, they're sort of spreading their time servicing where there is currently the highest needs and meeting clients where, wherever they are.
Okay, and so the part-time means it would be part-time in Langley Township and part-time in Langley City?
Correct.
Or part-time in Langley and part-time in Vancouver?
So part-time in this township and part-time within the city of Langley. So the $50,000 is, would be for a full-time, so half of that for each of the municipalities.
Okay, you're probably going to run into problems with the city on the half-part because they consider themselves to be so much smaller than we are.
Right.
But it would be interesting in pursuing this further to know where the concentration of the seniors that are homeless are coming from.
Right.
Are they out of Langley City or are they out of Langley Township?
I don't have the, so the Stepping Stones who have funneled the information, the 412 homeless and at-risk seniors in last year, I don't know where the breakdown is, but I could investigate further from them. You know, if they could just give an anecdotal perspective. I don't think they actually track that, but I can double-check.
Yeah, because that might be worthwhile information. I don't think, I'm opposed to a 50-50 split, but I doubt very much the city's going to go for a 50-50. They'll probably want 80-20. They take the 20, we take the 80.
Right, okay. Well, thank you for that insight.
Great, so there's no other speakers or, sorry, questions?
Questions, great.
So thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you for having me. And thank you, Bob, for the, or Counselor Long, for the invite. Thank you.
Great. All right, so that concludes our delegations. Now we move on to F1, Agricultural Land Commission application, 100327. Can I get a motion? Moved by Counselor Qualley, second by Counselor Whitmarsh. And, oh, sorry, Counselor Ernestson, you want to push your button one more time? There you go. Discussion, so Counselor Ernestson, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question for you, I guess to staff. I'm just wondering, so I'm in favor of this, but I just was curious as to whether or not we have any public informational record of whether or not any of the, well, the surrounding neighbors have any problems with the filming as indicated in this application, those number of filming days?
Madam Chair, staff is not aware of any issues from the residents.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so seeing no other questions, I'll call the vote. Hold on, so I just got to label this here, F1. All right, and that carries unanimously. Moving on now to F2, Agricultural Land Commission application, 100331. And this, can I get a motion? And just to note, this would be a motion to not authorize the referral. Can I get a motion? Counselor Davis, second by Counselor Qualley. Any speakers? Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I had a question on the wording of this because it's not us that makes the decision on exclusions. Isn't the wording usually to refer or not to refer rather than not authorize?
This is to not authorize referral, so that would be not referring it to the Agricultural Land Commission.
Okay, but it's just the wording, not authorize the referral. Do we, do we have the power to not authorize a referral? Or is it just, like, I always thought we were just the conundrum. They bring us here and we either say, yeah, it applies, it matches our bylaw, or it doesn't match our bylaws.
Madam Chair, the responsibility of council is to either authorize referral or not authorize referral. That is required pursuant to the Local Government Act for applications to the ALR, to the ALC. So in this case, staff is not recommending referral, which then relates to the request or recommendation to council to not authorize the referral.
Okay, but if we were going to authorize a referral, what would the wording look like then?
To authorize referral.
Okay, it's just I'm not, I thought we'd had a discussion at previous council meetings around the word authorize and whether or not we can use that terminology. Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no other speakers, I'm going to call the vote on F2.
Can we just clarify?
A vote in favor is to not be sending it to the Agricultural Land Commission, yes. All right. And that passes unanimously. All right, now we're going to move on to F3, which is the capital grants, or sorry, the 2018 Grants Report. Can I get a motion, please, for that? Moved by Counselor Long, second by Counselor Qualley, and discussion. Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to divide out the third and fourth paragraphs with regards to the all candidates meetings and the three community associations. So I'd like to have this whole report with everything but those two under one division and those two paragraphs, the third and the fourth paragraph, under a second division or under a second motion.
Okay, do I have a second for that? Counselor Ernestson? All right, and, hold on, let me just... Any discussion?
Yeah, the reason why I'm asking to do this is I think there's some anomalies in the report and some definite questions that are coming up relative to the community association's application. So I believe as this is, well, no, some of them did come forward last year, but I would like to treat them as a separate discussion, which is why I'm asking for division.
All right, Counselor Ernestson?
Hi, yes, thank you.
Oh, hold on. Where did you go? Let me just, there we go.
In the ethers somewhere. Yeah, I have the same concern. I reviewed this, as I know we all did, over the weekend. And I was wanting to undertake a similar kind of exercise in order to separate out that particular category because I think from my perspective, I need more information and a review of how that was crafted and how the decision was made that I don't see exactly beyond just the superficial wording of the rationale for how that came about. So I would be happy to carve those out and have them reviewed separately.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Yes, sorry. First question. We've received on-table revisited report for this, oh heavens, what is it? F3, could, maybe because I'm not a speed reader, could, is, what was in this that has been revised? Is it a... Is it a simple revisation or is it something that I, because I've kind of studied the report I had all, all weekend?
Mr. Becken?
Madam Chair, the actual references to one grant application that was mistakenly classified is not compliant when in fact it was. So we've corrected it to show that that grant application was compliant. That therefore has required a change to all of the subtotals throughout. So that's the effect of only changing the memo on the first page indicates which was the grant application that was mistakenly labeled. It's a memo.
Okay, so the memo would be on the update of the regular afternoon, then?
Correct.
Okay, sorry, could you just tell me which one it is so I'm not?
So it's just this, this is being revised, so it's the, is removed under the community banners.
Oh, okay, okay, so that, okay, okay.
Is one removed under the community banners.
Okay, perfect, thanks. I was just concerned, I have, I have no problems taking, I spoke to a member of the Fort Langley Community, and they also felt that they were disappointed and the report wasn't, wasn't They had, there was a few items, so, so what were, what are we?
We're, we're speaking on the division right now.
Yeah, the division.
Yeah.
So I think, I think I absolutely would support the division because I have something to say about both the other ones. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no other speakers, I'm going to call the vote, and I'm going to label this F, F3 still? Yeah, okay. All right, so motion to divide is, is carried unanimously. So we will deal with the first portion of F3, which are the first two paragraphs.
And the last.
And the, sorry, and, yes.
I think it's all about paragraphs three and four.
Yes, all but, that's an easier way to say it, thank you, yes. Okay, so first on, oh, do we have any, anyone want to speak on that? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I apologize for my voice again. The, the question I had was by, through your worship to, through to staff, we created a new category in here called minor festivals, and I'm wondering if, just wanted to make sure and understand that the two that were applied for in, that were rejected in the major festival category, were those two applications therefore then accepted as part of this minor festival category? So they will receive the money that they've asked for?
That's correct.
Under the new division of minor festivals?
Not all the money they've asked for, but a portion of the money. The upper limit to the minor festival?
Did you want to come forward, maybe, to save your voice? I'm sure there'll be more questions for you, so you can come get comfy.
Through your worship, to Counselor Whitmarsh, yes, it was, it was included in the new category, particularly because they don't fall in with the threshold of 10,000 people, so the upper limit of the new category is 5,000, as opposed to 10,000 in the major festivals category.
Right, okay, so now, so that was for the Lions Club, May Day celebrations with the Lions Club, right? So the other one was the Langley Rotary Club's Rib Fest, and it says they didn't qualify because they hadn't held a Rib Fest before.
That's correct, not in the township of Langley.
So one of the criteria is that they have held that event before?
It's.
And, and had success?
Yes, it's, within the criteria, it's specific to that they've had realized an attendance of X number of people. So what I'm doing is, I'm saying that the Rotary Club as a community service club has many examples of past successful events, and that we should look at that amendment based on service to community by that particular, by that club and other clubs as an inclusion based on their track record.
Okay, and if, if this turns to be successful and they have more than 10,000, then next year they could apply in the major events category, correct? Okay, thank you.
All right, any other speakers, questions? Okay, so we'll call the vote then on everything but the second and third paragraph. So do I label that again, F3? Okay, oh, good, that makes it easy, all right. All right, and that carries unanimously. So now we'll move on to the divided second and third paragraph discussion. Is there any discussion of council? All right, Counsel Richter?
Okay, I understand that there are a few parts of the report that may not reflect exactly what these community groups have done, like, for example, if we look at the chart on F3, page 18, Brookswood Furnrich Community Association, it said they got a previous grant, they have not gotten a previous grant, but the criteria is met. The Fort Langley Community Association, again, it doesn't say that they got a grant, but I believe they applied, and also it doesn't say anything about whether or not the criteria was met. I also think that, it seems to me that, at least I've had feedback with regards to the Fort Langley group, that they actually went out and did fundraising on their own for an event. They went out and got $900 and then an additional $1,300 from the community in order to help pay for the survey that they do on a regular basis to identify what the issues are in Fort Langley. And the numbers that are present at the AGM may not be entirely clear either. So I'm thinking that when we say that these associations do not plan or organize programs in events or offer services for the benefits of their respective communities, and this is in the first paragraph on page four, that this is not exactly correct. In fact, I, I've been to some of the community associations' meetings, they do a lot around crime prevention, block watch, they have, I know in Fort Langley, they've had representatives of the film industry come in and talk to them. So these are very much events that the community can attain. Now, they're educational events, for the most part, but they're still events. So the whole wording of this, to limit them to having $200 in an election year for the purposes of, of a forum, like, I guess, a candidate's debate, seems to be a little restrictive, given that they do so much more in the way of community education and involvement. So I would like to change that $200. I mean, ideally, I'd like to give them the $2,500, but maybe we start with $1,000 and see what they do with that. And I don't think we should be restricting them on what they spend that $1,000 for, provided it's events for the community. So that's the amendment that I would like to propose. I'll hold off on it until other people have had an opportunity to, to speak to this as well. But at minimum, I think that we should be referring this back to staff and to the community associations to get clarification, because as far as I can tell, there was only one of the community groups, and that was the Willoughby Group, that expressed an interest in having a candidate's debate. None of the other ones have said that that was a priority for them. So we should really get clarification from them. Maybe there's an opportunity to ask Barb Sharp to come back and address council with regards to the work that she's been doing with these groups. She might be able to put some clarification to us. But like I say, I'd like to see them at least get $1,000 bucks to cover the events that they've applied for. And, and I'll let others have their say before I put that forward as a motion.
Okay, maybe we could just have staff give us maybe a little bit of insight first on, on some of the points of what actual events were, were actually applied for. And I, I realize the, we've got sort of in two sections here of, of providing $200 to the candidates for, I lost the page, for an all candidates, sorry, for the groups for an all candidates' meeting is one section, and then the, the pre, the next one is $200 for those community associations. So I'm assuming that the community associations that are listed actually applied with specific requests for what that, that money would be used for, that staff then came back with a recommendation of $200 to each of those community associations. So I don't, in the report, it doesn't necessarily specifically list exactly what the Brookswood Furnrich Community Association, Fort Langley Community Association, and Willoughby Community Association, what they, what specific events that they asked for, for that $2,500, which was then recommended to provide them with that. So maybe staff could give us a, a little bit of an idea on the specifics of those events that they didn't, or that they applied for.
Yes, I, I believe that was distributed to council, the actual applications, and I could pull each of those applications and tell you what they applied for, if you would like that.
Oh, Madam Chair, perhaps maybe we could just start at a higher level and work our way down, and Mr. Tullamello could help us as we do so, because I think I understand the, the point of contention. As we look at our grant program, it generally speaking has two broad categories. One is capital grants investing in infrastructure, and another is based on events, events such as Aldego Fall Fair Days, as a Cranberry Festival, but public events that there's people attending, and then we have some, some smaller events that we flow from. And as well, there's a kind of a third category, which is historical anomalies that council has recognized as being worthy of some sort of support. Critter Care may be an example, and there may be others out there as well. So of those categories, when we start looking through the grant process, we try to slot which ones fit in. In these situations, the applications, and Mr. Tullamello will help as needed, didn't fit any of those traditional categories. So as a consequence, when it didn't fit those categories, we do recognize that they, the community groups are trying to provide some level of services. We try to actually interpret what those services were that would most closely fit into the categories we accept, and that's where this history of the all candidates' meeting came in, is trying to slot something in because it would be of interest to them. Now, the question then is, well, could the community groups be recognized for the services suggested? They certainly could, but then we should have to consider if we wish to expand that to other community groups.
Yes.
Hospice, Boys and Girls Clubs, Scouts, I mean, I'm not saying that those are exclusive, but there's a whole range of other groups that provide community services, not community events. And we have not traditionally funded community services, except through the exception process. Council can certainly do so. It's the direction Mr. Tullamello is looking for then, in terms of what level of services that we should be funding and how we should equitably provide that across the continuum. So we've got no objection to the concept, other than the financial concerns that we're trying to advise council of as to the other groups to be equitable. Mr. Tullamello, does that summarize it, or do you want to add something?
That actually fully summarizes it.
Yeah, thank you. That was the, the background info that I, I was looking to sort of add into the discussion, so thank you very much. We will move on now to our next speaker, which is Counsel Davis.
Thank you. I, I, I think from what I've heard that there's, there's three organizations, and they didn't meet the criteria. But I'm wondering, to, to me, having meeting, like, a criteria then is, is, an, an event is to have, you said, an event is where people come out from the community. Well, if you have a meeting and people come out from the community, which are members of the community, wouldn't that be an event?
Yes, but as Mr. Becken explained, every group can come out and request funding for such meetings out in the community, and you would be opening up that widely to the Boy Scouts or anyone that wants to host such events in that category of grants up to $2,500.
My examples may not have been the best, but the distinction is, when you're looking at community events, you're looking at things like Cranberry Festival or, or some things where a local service group is going to put on a lobster fest or something with the purpose of trying to perhaps raise funds or to do something for a charitable cause, that's where it has its root. We're now going beyond that, which is perfectly fine to say now we want to actually encourage community participation. And that's perfectly fine, but it's an expansion of where we've, we've gone from in the past. And that would then mean we would simply have to make sure we understand and defined that community service, if you will, and distinguish it from those other levels of service that may exist, like Boy Scouts or tribes, and, and make sure that there's a distinction and delineation they can, they can actually adhere to, unless we're prepared to consider that in terms of going forward. You're quite right, the grant program has began in its infancy was, well, let's be all things to all people, and then it went through some phases where it was very narrow, and now it's somewhere in between. And we all, we struggle each year with trying to find the right mark for what is going to be in between.
Okay, so we made a decision to, like, to cut it down to 200 and to ear-tag, that, that was us, right? We made that, to ear-tag a candidates' meeting.
That is the closest thing we could find, and there are descriptions that fit into the existing categories, if you will. So that would be something we could think of, and we put a level to it. We could have said it doesn't meet any of the categories, or we infer, we can't, we don't want to infer what they're trying to achieve, and set a denial. We tried to recognize what their intent was and came up with the closest thing we could. But council could help and say, well, we want to expand that to be, and this is only illustration, any meeting that more than five people attend is worthy of being funded. Now, that's an extreme example, but that's then sending us down another path we could begin to explore. Or they could say, no, we don't want to be in that business, as traditionally councils have said. That's historic councils, not this council. So as a consequence, we want to, we want to recognize that history. Or again, something in between from everything to nothing. That's where the council can make exceptions or can make new policy.
Okay, but, so this comes in the heels of, we just had all the committees here, and now we've kind of throttled them back to $200. I mean, is it?
If I could help, we could simply say it's $1,000, or $2,500, or $1,500 for whatever the thing that makes it meritorious in council's eyes, that we can say applies to everyone. Or we can say, well, it only applies to these groups because it can be distinguished as being separate and distinct from the other groups we've attempted to describe.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Oh, gosh, Arneson, I did that to you again, I'm sorry. I think you're on now. I keep skipping you by accident, but you're there. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I'm going to preface my comments by saying, I felt very sorry that when I read this report, that what I think we thought we were doing in trying to streamline the process indeed turned out to be problematic because of the glitches and all the things and the extraordinary work that was presented to staff, unfortunately, as a byproduct of doing that. So apologies for that, and thank you for all of your efforts to put this together. At this point, I think I can only deal with what we have before us, which are three groups, so I'm not going to use any conjecture about where this would lead to in the future. That's subject to a further discussion. My concern basically is that it appears that in, by default, I'm going to use this logic, by default, we've created another category, and it's sort of referential to what we understand is the nature of the activities of this group, and it was then translated into a dollar amount. So my questions are more having to do with trying to understand further, how, the $200, for example, how could you derive that kind of figure based on the information that came from the groups? Because when I looked at a lot of the activities that they do, I just, that didn't translate to me about the number of things that they have. So that's my first point. My second point is that, and I understand Mr. Becken's point, I assume that what he's saying is the original categories had a certain connotation, like, if it was an event and we all had a common understanding about what that looked like. But what I think is that these are mini-events, and if you added them all up together, they may not look exactly like a major event as we had anticipated, but I don't think that our classification has taken that aspect into account. And so, and I guess, I don't know how else to say this except plainly, I, I felt that the characterization of these groups is similar to a ratepayer group. I really wasn't buying that. So to me, that's a very subjective kind of analysis that one could make. I'm not saying that it would be wrong, I'm just saying that under the circumstances, you know, there's volumes of all the things that were done, and when I look, there's a category where you tick the boxes, are you eligible? I couldn't find anything in there that made me feel that they were ineligible, if I used the, the opposite of that. And so to define them in a particular way so as to make it seem reasonable that they were getting $200, and especially the ones that didn't. were getting, uh, $200, and especially the ones that didn't express any interest in having an all candidates meeting. In fact, they never said anything about that. What they were saying was, we have lots of public engagement activities and events that we host, and, um, you know, therefore, I felt that they were worthy of much more than $200. And so, I think my perspective is, we should, um, we should reconsider this category based on, uh, further input and the information that we've received today.
All right.
Just to, to respond, if I could?
Yes.
Because there's some very good, very good, and some sound points being made, but to help Mr. Tullamello, I think there was two key things. The test is not, are they, um, we're not looking to see if they are ineligible. We're looking to see if we can actually find a way to make them or say they are eligible. So there's nothing in the report that should effectively make the determination other, or whether, other than if or not they comply with the terms as we now have them. As we then go to the items that you listed, there were some very meritorious items that were listed in terms of the activities of these associations. Traditionally, though, those activities have not been recognized by council as being something that would be worthy of a grant, either individually or in combination. Now, again, that doesn't mean that council cannot begin to look at those as being worthy of grants, whether it be for 200, 500, 1,000, whatever it may be. That will be the, the jurisdiction of council. We would simply seek to define those categories, and to take your direction as to whether or not they apply beyond those groups, to other groups that may do similar things, or whether we're to restrict them to these groups, and what the basis of that distinction is. Is that fair, Mr. Tullamello?
Yes.
All right. Counselor Qualley, you're up next.
Um, just for clarity, through you, Madam Chair, to staff, this is two separate items. So you're recommending $200 for all candidates, and then $200 to each of the three. So they're two separate items.
No, they're one separate, one item.
So it's one item, okay.
Yes.
So, I'm not in support of funding all candidates meetings, ever. I think this municipality, it's not our job to do that. I think if, it's not our job to facilitate all candidates meetings. That's not the role of this municipality, so I'm not in support of funding that at all. I think there's a lot of people who could, you know, uh, host all candidates, the local chamber, the local unions, all of them. I just don't, I, I, I think this municipality, and every municipality, needs to stay out of the all candidates meetings processes. So, uh, I'm not in favor of that, uh, level of support for that specific use. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get my head around this distinction between an event and a meeting. So in my mind, when a group, like any of these associations, has a meeting, it's their monthly meeting. So, let's say they were AA, and, and AA meeting happens once a month, or once a week, or whatever. You go to your regular AA meeting, it's regularly scheduled meeting, people show up, do their business, go home. Outside of the regular monthly events, or weekly events, however often they're scheduled, if you're hosting a special meeting, or a special event, that isn't fit, doesn't fit into the box of your regular meeting, that, to me, is a special event, or, in the case of my AA analogy, like an AA roundup, or the bigger style events that they host, right? Which is outside of their regular meetings. I think there has to be a distinction made between meetings and events. I, in my mind, meetings aren't events. I, they're totally different, a, a totally different distinction. So, a few months ago, when Mrs., when Ms. Sharp delegated to council, she, uh, suggested that we create a mechanism, or a definition, of a category within our community grants process, for this community service type category, right? We referred that delegation to staff, for a staff report on how best to integrate this into our process. This, to me, isn't a good integration of that into the process. So we've already referred to staff to come back to this council with recommendations on how to enhance the, the grant application process, that could perhaps accommodate some of the community groups, or all of the community groups that are registered nonprofits, and create a li- a list of criteria more suitable for that as a specific category. I think, in my mind, only one group actually asked for money for an all candidates meeting, so to give them $200 earmarked for an all candidates meeting is giving them something they didn't even ask for. So I'm not in support of that. I think that, um, I, I'm, I think this was delegated to staff for exactly this reason. Council was trying to avoid creating a political process in all of these applications, and I feel like last year we did that, and we sort of achieved our goal of removing council from the vetting process of this. So, I'm not in support of funding the community associations, because I don't think this is the best way of doing it. I think there is a way of doing it, and I think if we look at them as a standalone category, where we're perhaps working with them on specific events, just like we do every other, uh, community group that applies, then I'm really interested in talking about that, and how we can enhance the community engagement that they do as community groups. But this isn't it for me. So, I'm not going to support the $200, I'm not going to support $1,000, I'm not going to support that, because I'm waiting still for the staff report from the referral we made several months ago. So, um, do you have any idea when that report might be coming forward?
Uh, it's in the queue.
Yeah, I know there's a lot on your plate.
I got a lot of things in the queue right now.
Yes, so, um, I appreciate that, but there is a way to do this, and, uh, I think it requires more conversation, and more ideas than we can explore around this $200. So, I thank you for your work on this, but I'm not going to support the, the recommendation.
All right. Now, Counselor Long, I had you on here, but you disappeared. Did you mean to do that, or was that my fault?
I definitely meant to disappear.
Oh, you meant to disappear, okay, no problem. I just, I'm sorry to point, I just thought I might have pushed the wrong button, but, all right, Counselor Richter. Oh, why does it keep, okay, hold on. You were next, Counselor Richter, but I, for some reason, it's not, it's skipping each person, but, okay.
So, in listening to the discussion, it sounds like we need a new category of community grants that encompass these community groups, because they're registered societies, so they're, they're set up in an arms-length fashion. But, uh, I mean, the mayor has said repeatedly that one of the legacies of this council is public engagement, and I think the emergency, or the, the emergence of these groups is clear evidence of the willingness for public engagement, and as that, as public engagement or participation is something that this council has supported all the way along, I think we should continue to support it, and maybe put some money behind supporting it. So, I think maybe what we should do, I appreciate the comments that were made about not all of these groups have applied, there's only been three that have applied. I would like to, um, I still want to go with $1,000. I still want to make that $1,000 available to the registered society, community groups that have formed, uh, to host events in their respective communities. And I would put that, uh, that amendment forward. So the amendment would basically be to strike the third and fourth paragraphs and replace. The council approve a new category of community grant oriented towards registered community associations, and that each registered association be eligible for $1,000 per year to fund and host commu- events in their community. And, and I don't think we should restrict the type of event that they're going to do, as long as it's an event. So that's my amendment.
Do we have a second, or?
One second.
Counselor Davis, seconds? All right, so, now, what do I do on the screen when I have an amendment, and I want to have a different queue for the... At the top, where it says open amendment? I feel like I might have pushed something that's worked? Okay, good, okay. So, Counselor Davis.
Okay. Um, could I, maybe just a couple clarification points? You said a registered?
Yeah, I, I understand that these groups that are, that have formed are actually registered societies.
Registered society, okay. Could I maybe have a question? Maybe through, uh, Madam Chair, to, um, the, what is category seven? It says rural. What does that mean, rural?
Say that again, sorry.
Rural. On, uh, number three, that we're slashing out, uh, cate- it says, one is Aldergrove, two, blah, 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 five Walnut Grove, six Willoughby, and then seven, rural.
Rural.
Huh?
Rural, meaning the agricultural community.
Okay, so we don't have one, then? So I better go make one?
No, but you have organizations out there that, no, there, there is not one that exists presently, but that's based on the same thing with the Nothing Without Effort Program, sorry, through your chair, your worship to Counselor Davis, that, that's based on the categories that we've defined for the Nothing Without Effort Program.
Okay, so, I see, now, but if you slash one to six, or one to seven, are we, are we taking out some more, some here that are supposed to be, like, I don't know, Langley, I'm just saying this, please don't, Langley UK Association, but that's not a registered society, is it? That's an, an organi- that's a...
I believe these are in regards to the community associations, that, that the motion is...
Is that your intent, Counselor Richter?
Yes, that this new category is strictly for community associations that are registered societies. So whoever, whichever community has a community, well, I think there's three right now. There's Fort, Fort Langley, Brookswood, and Aldergrove, and Willoughby. Oh, okay, there's four. But only three of those applied, so they've gone through the, well, maybe Langley Meadows is too, but...
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Long.
Yeah, okay, so, wait a moment. We said that there's a, the delegation that came to us a few weeks ago was referred to staff. Staff haven't completed the study yet. We're talking about community grants, and it doesn't fit in there, so we're, it's, it's not a category that's going to work, because it's not, it's something that's going to have to be dealt with specially. We need to wait for the report to come back from staff, and they can take this, all, all this conversation can be put into the hopper as well. But I, I think it's very clear that, that the, what council is trying to do does not fit into the community grant process as we know it. So trying to do it on the fly right now, I don't think is the answer, but I'd be looking forward to staff coming back. They've, they've been hearing some of the conversation here, and when it comes back, we can have a full, certain discussion about it, aside from the community grants. These community grants are based upon events that'll happen in the next few months, they're, they're waiting for their funding to go into place, and they are event-based. When we heard the sustainability panel speak to us at the event center, they suggested that would be a great, um, thing for the, for these communications to do, is just to sponsor fairs. When I say fairs, we're not talking about clowns, we're talking about getting the community out together, and discussing what the concerns are, getting volunteers together, identifying people, uh, building the organization through, through the community get-togethers, and those would, would have qualified, I would think, under this grant program, but I guess we didn't get those applications. So I guess I would like to see the staff come back with the report that we've asked for, and I would encourage council not to try and, uh, do something today, just because we're giving grants out. Let's give the grants out for those who qualify, and let's, uh, wait for staff to come back and, and approach what the, where the next chapter will be for these community associations. By the way, North Vancouver has at least 16. I think I found another one that's had 31 in a community, because their associations pop up amongst all kinds of neighborhoods and all kinds of issues. So, we'll have to be very careful that we don't, uh, make too broad a brush, and that we come back with something that's specific to Langley, and that's what staff is supposed to come and back and tell us about in a new report that we haven't got yet.
All right, thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Um, yeah, I would su- uh, support Counselor Long's, uh, thoughts on this. I think that we should wait till we get a staff report, um, on this topic. I do have difficulty with the concept of financially supporting regular meetings that groups have. I, I do think we have to make that distinction, and I think the report should make that distinction between an event and a meeting. On one hand, in the minor festivals, we require that you have at least 5,000 people before you can get $5,000. And now we turn around and say, you could have a meeting with 10 people, and that might count as an event. So I'm, I, I'm struggling with that definition. I think I would be, I would like to see staff come back with that report, that talks about what an event is, and maybe some kind of attempt at a definition of an event, uh, that's open to all people, not just those who are members of the association, but anyone in the community at any time, um, and it's not a regular meeting. Uh, some of the other groups that were mentioned were doing things like movie nights, and day camps, and programs for children. Um, that's the kind of thing that I think of as an event. I don't think of as the regular monthly meeting as an event. So, so I'd like to see the report come from staff. I think we should separate it from this particular topic. Um, it's not dead, we have a report coming. Um, the, Barb Sharp had reported to us, gave us some information. We've asked staff to come back with that, and I think we should wait on that and make a good decision on what that should be. I agree with Counselor Long, we could have, uh, 30 and 40 registered societies if we wanted to, if, if we kept it too open. So I think we have to really think through that carefully, and to do it on the fly today is not right.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, I appreciate the conversation. I, I think I'd like to start off just by, um, Counselor Qualley's very salient, um, point, that, and others have picked up on, the fact that we had requested a report, which would have been very helpful with respect to making this decision today. But as a, a stepping off point from that, I look at this as, um, I would be in support of this amendment, but only if it was conditional on the fact that we could set a certain amount, because I think what's happened, from my perspective, is we've set an expectation from the community groups. I know nobody's guaranteed anything, but if you went through the process, and you could tick all the boxes, and through no fault of their own, they apparently don't fit, except for something that we've crafted. I feel that it's fair to give them something, because as far as I know, they could have predicated, uh, a few different events on getting this funding. So I'm not sure, but I think that it would be fair to, um, give them something, but make it conditional on the fact that there will be a subsequent staff report, and in the event that we determine through our own resources and staff direction, that we want to amend that, give more, give them less, that we would be open to be able to do that, because we might just decide to give them, you know, $500. I don't know that $1,000 is the right number, but, uh, at the same time, I feel like, having gone through that process, because the other thing that I don't know now is the, when we're going to receive the staff report. So could it be six months, you know? And then they're going to be languishing without any funding at all. So I think it's more fair to create what seems to be reasonable under the circumstances, and then make it subject to a conditional amendment later on, if necessary.
Counselor Qualley.
Um, yeah, thanks. So, I appreciate the acknowledgement of council that, um, that these applications don't fit into our current categories, and that there is a need for a new category, and in fact, we talked about that when we made the referral to staff. In fairness, the staff report was only requested a few weeks before the grant application closed. Maybe three weeks, four weeks, there was a window of, uh, time when council requested this report, and the grant application closed. So the, the, any expectation council had to receive a report before the close of the grant application process was, is not real or fair to staff. Um, you know, I think if we're going to look at creating a new category, like Counselor Long suggested, let's wait for the report, and have a proper discussion around all of this, and then get the input around the criteria, what's an event, what's a meeting, and have a discussion with them about this. But making this decision right now on the fly, to me, is counterproductive. Think if we're creating a gr- a, a category around the, uh, community service associations, which is what the, these groups are doing, and I will appreciate, I do appreciate, and I value the work that they do, engaging in, um, their community, and I don't intend for this in any way to diminish the work they do, but, truthfully, if, if, I think we, we need to wait for that staff report, because, uh, even Counselor Richter's motion right now, her only two criteria is that there's a registered society, and that they're, they're having an event, but there's no, what is an event? Is it a regular monthly meeting? Uh, to me, that's not an event. A special event would be a special meeting, outside of your regular business meeting. Um, so I, I think, you know, any, anybody can form a nonprofit. It costs less than $100 to file a request with a Victor- in Victoria to apply to be a nonprofit, and so, um, how many of these are going to turn up? I mean, I don't know. I think we need to set some proper criteria, and make it really transparent and easy for everybody to understand, and engage the community groups in that process. And this is part of what we could do, uh, perhaps, in this community... And this is part of what we could do, uh, perhaps in this community task force that's currently being formed, is talk about some of this stuff. So, um, again, doing this on the fly doesn't make sense to me, but I do appreciate council's acknowledgement that this, these applications don't fit inside any of our current criteria.
Thank you. I'm going to add a couple thoughts, uh, to the, to the discussion. Um, I, I agree with the, the comments that have been made. I think that we, we do have a report that's coming and, and, uh, I think we've all, like us, Counselor Qualley and Whitmarsh have all acknowledged that there is a, a need to sort of, uh, to address this and to properly, uh, account for it within our process. And, and, um, I think doing it now and doing it on the fly and sort of creating, uh, picking a number out of the air and, and creating this, um, without sort of fully understanding the ramifications of it is, um, is, is not responsible. And I think that the community associations, uh, do great work and that there, there could be, um, you know, several ways of them being able to, uh, to apply and, and meet the criteria if we, when we go through the process. I think staff has heard and listened and, and heard the delegations and heard the discussion of council, and I feel like we need to allow that process to, uh, to, um, be completed and then have a discussion and deal with it at that point as opposed to trying to sort of squeeze it in right now. Um, I agree, uh, fully with the, the comments about the all candidates meetings. I don't think that, that certainly wasn't what I felt like I heard from the delegations when they came, was what they were looking for the funding for. Um, and I feel, uh, a concern about us funding all candidates meetings as a government, uh, as the taxpayers funding those. I think that that is not our, our place. I feel like, um, you know, in previous all candidates meetings, the candidates who are running were responsible for, for paying the, the cost of, of what it would be per, per person who was participating. I think that that is a, um, you know, a fair way to, to fund those or to have unions or, or other sort of groups, um, be involved in funding it. But having, um, the township and our, our taxpayers fund all candidates meetings that could be set up by sort of any organization just doesn't sit well with me either. And I don't feel like it really addresses, um, the needs of the community associations anyways because I feel like the work they're doing, the, the surveys and the, you know, the, um, events where they're having, um, you know, uh, public information meetings and things like that with the police or all those sort of different events, I think fits better with what, um, with what work, the work that they're doing and where we could look at incorporating some type of funding within our process. So those are just my thoughts on that, and we're going to then move on. Okay, hold on now.
Do you have my little icon?
You, you've already spoken once, so you go, you go to the, to the bottom of the list unfortunately. Counselor Richter is up next.
Okay, um, staff have come back with this, and I think council's been quite clear that it's not exactly what they had in mind. I think council's also been clear that, um, the staff report needs to address more issues such as what an event is and what a reasonable amount of money is. So rather than send my motion down to defeat because I think my amendment motion gives more direction, it may not end up being the final direction that, that we go in, I'd like to move a deferral on my motion for the requested staff report and a follow-up presentation from the community associations on the events they applied for.
Okay, so we have a deferral motion on the table. Is there a second to that? Counselor Arneson?
Just, I think it's a referral? You wanted to refer?
Well, I don't want to address the amendment that I put on or the original motion until we've got the staff report and we've had a presentation from the community groups about what they applied for.
The staff report won't be taking into account your proposed motion. It's being deferred until after that report comes back and we hear from the community groups.
Yeah, exactly.
And then it would appear back on the agenda? Is that what would happen?
That's what would happen, but if I could just comment for a moment, I think council now understands part of the challenge that staff have had, uh, given the short time to actually formulate the report because it was classified as being a grant report, and it still may be, but it's a different type of grant that we're contemplating than one we've considered before. So it's falling under a different category. And while the motion that was made originally does not actually form part of the deferral, it does help us because what it's suggesting is that the criteria consider the entity being a not-for-profit doing some level of community service, not a community event, and what the implications of that would be then vis-à-vis other communities, how they've handled those things, and how that could apply to us. Because it could mean that there is one or there could be several that actually meet the criteria because they seem to be in part geographically based but not exclusively. So it becomes a, a different approach, and that's, with that direction, I think it'll help us then craft that. Mr. Tullamello, is that making sense?
Yes.
Now, does staff prefer it to be a referral or does the deferral achieve the same?
It's choice of the mover because it's...
Cause we're not going to deal with the vote, so it's a deferral.
Correct. It's the choice of the mover, so it'll be deferred, but we have this context from the discussion, but it'll be, it'll be considered, but it won't, won't be explicitly commented on. It'll be more the research and the concept that we'll be talking about because that's a departure from what we've done historically. Doesn't mean it's not something we shouldn't do, it just means it's not something that's traditionally fit within the grant category.
Okay, so staff has heard and, and now is going to incorporate that. Okay, so we have, okay, now, now, now I need some help again with what button to push. I have amendment, do I clo- do I close a certain amendment? I have on my screen amendment one open and amendment two open. I don't...
You should be able to open amendment two at this point.
Open amendment two. There we go. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we have discussion on the deferral.
But point of order, is it the, on the, is it on the issue or the time and, and...
The, the discussion is, the discussion is on council deferring this motion to a, a later date after we've received a, uh, the report from staff and a, a presentation by the community associations, I believe as well, was noted in that.
So the discussion is on the merit of the time and date, not on the substance of the...
The discussion is on the merit of deferring the item, yes.
That's correct. The item is being deferred, presuming that it'll come back pending these other steps to occur. So it'll be considered independently of those steps, but after those steps. I believe that's the intent of the mover.
Yes, okay. Counselor Davis.
I'm going to support it. I want you to understand my view of what's a meeting and what's an event. I have to have a bath for both. Consider that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Davis. All right, seeing no, yes.
They were to incorporate that into the policy specifically, but we'll have to reference all members of council.
Yes, I, that is noted. Okay, uh, so I'm going to call the vote on the deferral. And I'm going to label this, oh... I'm, I've lost, where are we?
F three.
F three again, thank you. I should have known that because it's been a few times now. All right, and I'm going to vote and say vote completed. And now that carries unanimously. So that has been, so Counselor Richter's amendment has been deferred, so now we're on the main motion. Right? Oh, the whole thing deferred? The whole thing deferred, even with, okay, oh, good, that's great, thank you. All right. Okay, so now, I gotta, hold on, I just gotta, I gotta log myself back in here. I got sidetracked. Okay, so now we are on...
G one.
G one, correspondence. Can I get a motion to receive? Moved by Counselor Long, second by Counselor Arneson. Any discussion? No? Okay. Oh, yes, you certainly can.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I know that there is already an initiative, uh, in play for us to consider this, so I'm hoping that, uh, we can, uh, send this to the appropriate staff and maybe get some feedback regarding, um, the potential, uh, for this costing, uh, what that timeframe would look like. Because I know that, um, we're in the process of moving towards that, but if there was anything that we could do to further, uh, what we know about the cost and the uptake, I think it would be helpful. So, um, I'm hoping we would refer this, uh, correspondence to staff for some information back.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Okay, so a motion to refer this to staff for information back made by Counselor Arneson, second by, uh, Counselor Davis. Okay, now I'm going to say this. Any discussion? Counselor Qualley?
Just to clarify the information that we're looking for, it could be helpful for the referral because he wants to come back with it, so...
Okay, hold on, we'll put Counselor Arneson back on. There you go.
Madam Chair, perhaps I can provide some information. Counsel, there, there is a report that council has already asked for. It will be coming to council in the next, uh, next four to six weeks.
Uh, okay, so then, um, just fold that into what council, or sorry, what staff is already, um, doing because, uh, my assumption is potentially that we are going to look at best management practices across Metro for this kind of infrastructure potentially, and this would be part of that conversation.
That's correct, so we'll treat this as a referral to that report? Is that permissible?
Yes, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay, so we're, just to clarify now, we are voting to refer this to the report that's already been requested.
We'll be technically to receive and refer to the report that's been requested.
Receive and refer, okay. Counselor Qualley, did you want to? Nope? Okay, so everyone's on the same page, so we're going to call the vote on that. Oh, I think I hit amendment already. Do I have to go back or can you fix that for me? I'm, I'm good, I can just call the vote, and so I label that G one. And there. All right, and that carries unanimously. So now we move on to minutes of committees, H one. Can I get a motion?
The queue is like...
Oh, I will do that, thank you, Counselor Long. Okay, uh, minutes of committee, H one. Can I get a motion to receive? Counselor Long, Counselor Davis seconds. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none, I will call the vote on, wait, hold on, sorry, H one. Okay, oh gosh, I always forget I have to vote now. Okay, there we go, and complete. That carries unanimously. So now we're on to items from prior meetings. Um, I one, so the Agricultural Economic Enhancement Committee Recommendation Motion, so that, can I get a, do I have to get a, um, mover for that again? Yes, I do? Okay, can I get a mover for that? Moved by Counselor Long, second by Counselor Davis. Any discussion? Yes, I see. Counselor Richter?
Um, well, it was actually a point of discussion relative to the committee, um, meetings.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I just wanted to go back to economic, uh, ag advisory and economic enhancement. A wonderful presentation from Kent Mullinex, Dr. Mullinex, at the meeting last, uh, last week. And, uh, he will be, uh, moving forward with his, with his report and bringing it forward. But I did want to follow up on the, uh, the $10,000 thing. Did we ever get any information back on that $10,000 for young farmers or...
Um, I, that's the motion that we're currently on now.
Is that the one we're on?
Yes.
Perhaps the clarification? We'll, we'll try and, Counselor Davis can help us if we're incorrect. The confusion, I believe, was that there was this work program with an item on it, a series of items, and it was perceived that the work program was having that item deleted for this new item being, uh, that we'll call it the matching program. The Young Agrarian Program effectively matches young farmers with, um, some, uh, locations or, or places where they can actually farm. It turns out, as we understand it, that it was not intended to replace, but was intended to augment so that it would fit within the funding envelope for the original work program but would be added to it and therefore was simply expanding the label of the scope of the funding so it could include some elements to it but would not detract from the existing work program. Is that correct?
Do you want to...
We, um, it, it, instead, like you said, instead of duplicating, we want to expand on what we're doing matching, um, young farmers to landowners coaching and legal process. That's what's cost the money. And, uh, they've already got some money from Metro and Suri, and so we're just having, we're just teaming up with, uh, LSaf also. Thanks, you.
Okay, great. Uh, Counselor Long?
Same thing, I was, I know that I had some concerns and now it's come back, so there was a memo also in our package that explained it all, so we're happy to get this $10,000 and then pretty quick, thanks.
Great, all right. Uh, seeing no other speakers, I will call the vote on I one. Let me just label this here, I one. And that carries unanimously. All right, any other business?
Termination.
Seeing none? Termination, seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh. All those, well, can we just raise our hands for this one, a favor? Okay, opposed, okay, great. And we're terminated.